We'll call this meeting of the May 21st, the May 21st meeting of the Blue Springs City Council to order. If you'd stand with me, we'll do a moment of silence and I'll lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a matter of housekeeping, I want to let everyone know that we have a volume problem with the microphones at the podium and so we're going to be providing a wireless microphone for the, anybody speaking to use. So be aware of that when you come up. We'll start with the consent agenda. I've had no requests for anything to be pulled. Does anybody have anything? All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve.
It's all moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We'll move on then to a presentation regarding the chamber leadership class. Laura, if you'd come up, please.
All right, how about now? Well enough? Can we go with it? Okay. Good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Laura Vermillion and I am the President of the Blue Springs Chamber of Commerce. And I'm so proud tonight to stand before you and be able to present the 2011-12 Leadership Blue Springs participants to you. So I would like the class to please come forward behind me. And I guess you, it's your decision if you're staying there or coming this direction.
I'll come stand solidary.
We issued him a challenge to be participating with our green t-shirts and it looks like he's done very well to fit in. This is the 17th class to graduate. Right now, I counted them today and we have over 200 graduates of the program and many of them are sitting in this room here tonight. Leadership Blue Springs was established in 1991 by the chamber and the purpose was really to develop a pool of leaders to help foster the growth and development of our community. This particular class has worked very hard since last September and they've learned about all the different aspects of our community. They will officially graduate on June 21st at noon at the conference center and you're all more than welcome to attend. So at that luncheon, they get a certificate for graduation and they get to tell us about the project that they have completed for our community. That's a new requirement of graduation. So I think what I'm going to do is ask the class to introduce themselves and I'd like them to tell you what business they're with.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Swank and I'm with Foster Dental Care.
I'm Tricia Kennedy with Kennedy's Resort.
I'm Tina Dale with Blue Springs.
Joe Miss Hollingsburg.
I'm Dave Furno with Blue Springs Christian Church.
Hello, I'm Ashley Hall with Community Learning.
Stacey Edwards, Blue Springs Police Department.
Danika Fui Mauna, Blue Springs.
Chris LaCena, Council.
Sally Haynes, First United Methodist Church.
And as I said, we're very proud of this class. We ask that you look toward them for community projects that you have and we want to get them involved in it as much as we possibly can. So I understand you have a picture opportunity?
Yes, we do. If the whole council would like to come down and join them.
Why don't you guys turn that way?
Laura, I want to thank you all for the work you do on this program and as a graduate, I can kind of let them know what can happen when you complete this program. So congratulations again. We will move on then to introduction and readings of Bill number 4212.
Our introductions, Your Honor. First reading of Bill number 4212, an ordinance amending section 610190 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, listing persons exempt from obtaining a solicitor's identification card or a peddler's license or identification card.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carried, second reading.
Second reading of Bill number 4212, an ordinance amending section 610190 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, listing persons exempt from obtaining a solicitor's identification card or a peddler's license or identification card.
Do we have a motion?
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
A second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Leveson.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Pippel.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Berman.
Aye.
Carried unanimously given it for ordinance number 4389.
Okay, we'll move on then to introduction and reading of Bill number 4213.
Our introductions, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill number 4213, an ordinance approving the final plat for Eagles Ridge PRO, second plat, a replat of Eagles Ridge PRO, first plat lots 45 through 60 and 69 through 85.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Your Honor, if I may, is this the point for discussion? I do have a question.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Letter C, the rear yard setback, can somebody explain that to me? It says the minimum rear yard setback for buildings shall be 20 feet. It's page five.
Would you like to apply to staff's funding?
Yes, staff can.
Certainly. That is a quote from the Unified Development Code for the two-family zoning district, laying out all the different setback requirements. And that specifically calls out 20 feet for the rear yard, again, minimum rear yard setback for all buildings.
So if you were going to put a shed in the building, it would need to be 20 feet off the property line?
No, that is specifically, it says for buildings shall be 20 feet. Again, the, it does not include in this section.
So that's not an outback building?
No, no, no. This is simply referencing the main, the primary structure.
Okay.
There's an accessory structure section, the UDC, as you're familiar with, that addresses accessory structures, so.
Okay, thanks for that explanation.
Yeah, sorry for taking that out of context, but yes.
Any other discussion? Now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carried.
Second reading of Bill number 4213, an ordinance approving the final plat for Eagles Ridge PRO, second plat, a replat of Eagles Ridge PRO, first plat lots 45 through 60 and 69 through 85.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Pippel.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Berman.
Aye.
Councilman Leveson.
Aye.
Carried unanimously given it ordinance number 4390.
Next, we have a discussion on CDBG 2012-2013 Annual Action Plan.
Your Honor, while Mr. Allen is getting ready, if you would allow me just the opportunity to make a couple of comments. Each year, we are required by HUD to have a series of discussions with the city council and mayor that would give us assistance and input in allocating and prioritizing the plan for how the city would spend the money that we receive from the federal government. And this discussion tonight, there's, it's simply a discussion and a presentation by staff. There's no formal action. So tonight begins a series of several meetings that we will have over the course of the next few weeks that will culminate in an official public hearing and then hopefully adoption of a new action plan.
Perfect introduction. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for that. That's exactly right. This is actually our first, actually our second year of the five-year consolidated plan. We adopted the new consolidated plan which covers five years' worth of annual action plans. We had our first one last year and this is the second year for that. As Mr. Johnson noted, this is the first discussion, as we'll be coming back before you, subsequent city council meetings to flesh out the different projects associated with the annual action plan and allocation of funds. What may not be terribly clear, but it's under the Financial Impact Section of Council Information Form. This year's projected budget or funds from HUD are to be $211,866. That's roughly average over the last few years. It's a little bit lower than what we had seen in earlier years, but actually is kind of creeping back up ever so slightly. With that, we wanted to highlight what you've seen the previous six years for CDBG funds. The city has invested through CDBG nearly $1 million back into the city through various projects such as parks, Blue Springs Park being one, streetlights, as you know, primarily downtown on Main Street, sidewalks throughout the low to moderate income areas, including downtown, programs, those programs specifically being minor home repair, which we've had for a few years, as well as first-time home buyer, which we've had just for a couple of years, and then administration along with that for staff time, just a portion of the staff time put into the programs and CDBG funds. With that, staff had a number of internal discussions and also some suggestions through the Downtown Alive group and their various subcommittees. Have a host of items, nine of them specifically, to present to you for your initial consideration and discussion. We're certainly open to responding to questions as best we can tonight, but wanted to give these to you for some, again, food for thought. We can certainly have some dialogue here tonight. Certainly would appreciate that. But those beginning with historic district sidewalks, as you know, the city received a moderate or modest, I should say modest grant to conduct a new historic survey and looking at increasing the historic districts downtown to include more commercial areas. Right now, it's almost exclusively residential in nature. So there's discussion, again, expanding that historic district and then obviously an opportunity to impact additional sidewalks that are needed for repair replacement. Main Street lighting, looking to further expand the Main Street lighting from 7th Highway to 15th Street and expanding that to the terminus of Main Street in the west at 19th Street. Main and 15th Street crosswalks, as you know, that's a pretty heavily traveled and utilized intersection. It's also the hub of the historic structures in that part of the historic district leading into, deeper into the historic district, such as the Chicago Alton Railroad Building, as well as the Brownfield House that was recently renovated. Missouri Main Street, against program being spearheaded by the Downtown Alive group, they will be coming back before you, believe, at the next city council meeting to give a presentation and discussion about their future aspirations and goals. Downtown Commercial Facade Grant Program, we've actually had a meeting just last week with the proprietor located in the bank building and some interest there moving forward with possibly renovating that facade. Historic Building Restoration, it's a little bit more generic in nature, but opportunity there to look at some of the restoration of what may be that expanded historic district, particularly along Main Street and the commercial area. Minor Home Repair Program, again, that's, we've allocated on average about $60,000 per year. That'd be about 12, maximum, a minimum of 12 applications, I should say, $5,000 cap each. First Time Home Buyers Program, that's coming at $39,000 each year. As you can see, we've not utilized the full $39,000 for the last two years, but that's kind of, that was the benchmark moving forward. And then, of course, just kind of the annual administration for the funds. So as you can see, that math works out to much more than $211,000. So that's why presenting you kind of the all-inclusive list and then kind of pick and choose from there and just see where the council's desires lie. And again, we provide a lot more opportunities for some specific projects as well as some additional programs that would benefit downtown in particular. So that was a, obviously a critical goal as part of the consolidated plan last year and with Downtown Live making a lot of headway recently, a lot of support there to look at some actual structural improvements as well and CDBG can assist with that. So I'll stand for any questions or comments at the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any questions?
Yeah, I guess I did have a follow-up on, for the Minor Home Repair Program. Been talking in prior years about there may be a drop dead date, a filing date for applications where if you don't get it in before this date, it may not go into, you may not get into this year's pool of money.
Correct.
But I wanted the application cycle opened up, you know, something outside of just the winter months, you know, like springtime, people are out there doing minor home repairs and I wanted to see about getting that application window opened up. I assume, I don't know if that applies to the first-time home buyers. I would assume that would be opened up year round.
Yes.
So I'd like to see the Minor Home Repair Program open up year round. Again, they may have a filing deadline to be in some funding year, but have we organized that and structured it to where the application cycle is going to be open longer?
That's a good question. That is certainly possible. City Lee Summit does it that way. Obviously, there's more, more work involved in administrative side of things to maintain that, but Michael Peterman, our principal planner who oversees our primary CBG funds, I don't know if you have comments on that?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you. But that's certainly an opportunity, but again, we're just looking at administrative support with that. We've since split the duties for these two programs, First Time Home Buyers and the Minor Home Repair Program amongst two staffs. So it's become a little bit more, a little bit less difficult, let's say, to administer those funds and those programs. But again, that may be an opportunity to open it up, as you're saying, to have additional funds utilized by applicants. Because as it stands now, we're not utilizing the full amount of funds. Same with the First Time Home Buyers Program. We're not utilizing the full annual allocation of those funds.
I think it's a positive, the first-time home buyers, that you can apply year round. You may not follow into different funding cycle, but I think it's important that people be able to apply.
Sure.
Mr. Johnson, you have a question?
If I may, just a follow-up question. Councilman, just so, we're tracking, you would want to see the program amended so that we would receive applications year round on a year-round cycle?
Sure.
Perhaps we put them in on a sort of a first-come, first-served basis or those, obviously, that have to meet the criteria. There might be some applications that we receive that don't meet the criteria.
Correct.
Those that would, we would look at them on a first-come, first-served basis based on which they, on when they had been submitted to us. But the process indeed may still have a deadline where we have to cut it off for that particular year. Is that generally what you're?
Sure, sure. And you may not even evaluate them for, you may take it and put it in an inbox and just say, look, we're not going to evaluate until this window, but at least people can feel like they can apply anytime during the year. I don't think that should restrict them, you know? And a lot of times, you're out there trying, you know, during the holiday season, sometimes people are not really focused on the home repair type issues.
Certainly look at that and see how we can improve that process.
Good point. It's certainly something we can, we'll have to discuss with the finance department as well. They obviously assist quite a great deal with administering the funds and helping with identifying qualifying applicants. So we'll kind of work with their schedule as well to see how that fits in with their programs and priorities too.
Councilman Carter?
Yes. First Time Home Buyer Program, I, we set $39,000 as a number so that we could help 13 people get in houses with $3,000. And I thought the first year, we used all of the money. So what I'm seeing here is, is there a drop-off in demand in the second year? What happened there?
That current total is just up to, up to date. There are applications still in the process. We'll use all 13 again.
Okay.
By midsummer, similar to what we did last year.
Okay, very good. And the other question that I have quickly, the historic building restoration, $100,000 seems like a lot of money. I mean, was there thought behind what that number represents?
We are working with the, the building in downtown that has the major facade that needs to be removed and some of the initial estimates on that were quite large, larger, much larger than the, what we put in here. And this is just 50%, maybe even a little less than 50% of what, what that estimate was in the past. So in an effort to really make a big bang in our downtown, that's why we estimated it that high.
Okay. One more, just, it just came to me, the depot. Any of these funds relate to the depot and moving of it or restoring of it?
Not, not yet, but it's very possible.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Edmondson?
If I may, one, I'd like to thank all the downtown group. We've got a good representation here tonight, so it's good to see them come out. I would like to say that we definitely do need to put some funding towards facade structures downtown. That's, that's a good way to make a good first impression when people come into downtown, is have it look appealing. And I know a lot of those business owners and business renters downtown have gone to a lot of effort to dress it up, but those are really nice, be nice programs to put in, put into effect. And I think you have to set a high figure on that to be able to make an impact on it in this day and age. It's not something you can get by with, with a $10,000 or $15,000 deal. It's going to take more money than that.
Any other questions for staff?
In the form, we put downtown facade program as one project and then the historic downtown restoration as a separate project because it was such a high-dollar item. So if those, we were looking at two separate items, a grant program with a lower dollar amount per grant, like $5,000, $10,000, $15,000, and then that one project, a very high amount because it would be its own single project.
One more, if I may.
Go right ahead.
What are we doing with the crosswalk at 15th and Main that's going to cost $50,000?
Again, we were just putting a number on, we're looking at what crosswalks were at 10th and 11th, looking at 15th and seeing if that was a wider intersection. So we applied more money to it. It was not based off of any estimates.
Yeah, a little bit deeper on this Commercial Facade Grant Program. How does that work? Is that just any commercial business downtown or?
Sure, I'd probably defer to Mr. Peterman on that, only that, is it 50%?
Yeah, most, we can set it up any direction we want to. Most of the ones, Independence has one, lots and lots of cities use it. The basic is 50% in-kind match and it's all exterior renovations. So we can set it up at any amount we want to and we can even step it up. If you do $5,000 worth of work, we'll give you five or however we want to set it up, but it would be a matching portion. So whatever, 50%, 75%, 25%, however we want to do it. And it would be, we could designate the area, we could set up the program how we want it to run. We could even set it up so another group could receive the applications first and review them.
Okay.
And give their approval.
There, unlike a, unlike a private citizen, there's, there's a range that, in other words, if you make too much money, you don't, you don't. if you make too much money, you don't, you don't qualify for this. What are the qualifications for commercial business?
Well, since our downtown is situated within our low mod census tracts, it all qualifies.
Okay, but yet, an average home out there wouldn't qualify?
Well, correct.
Because, because the person that owns it?
Because the person makes money, too much money, right? We have to base homes off the homeowner. We can set up downtown, our historic downtown, as an area benefit, and this program could benefit that area.
So if the business, the same criteria wouldn't hold on a business. The business could be extremely profitable, but just because they're in the location.
Correct.
Yes.
But same thing on the, the houses that are in the residential district, everything, they all qualify, but it goes back to the individual ownership and how much their revenue is.
It's because they're two different criteria for qualification. A, a single-family house isn't the same as an area benefit. So a single-family house has to be qualified by the individual who lives there, and we can designate an area to do commercial renovation.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Your honor, just a couple of comments. First of all, I think the council should feel very pleased with the outcome of the allocation of the funds that you've, you've received from CDBG over the past several years. And I believe Mr. Allen mentioned almost $1 million of reinvestment primarily into the downtown, and you can really see it through the improved intersections, the streetlights that, none of them look, look nice, but they serve a function by providing and lighting areas, and then all the sidewalks. And I'm pleased to see people every day using those sidewalks and getting a lot of exercise. We don't need a decision tonight from you on this, but we are looking for your input. And kind of what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is there still sort of general support and consensus for the Minor Home Repair and First-Time Home Buyers Programs? So those two programs combined alone take up $100,000. So if we set those aside, then that doesn't leave a lot of money for allocation toward other projects, but certainly we can continue to focus on infrastructure. There's been some discussion now about some beautification and facades. We will look at those areas if generally that's kind of where you want us to continue to focus.
Just for my two cents, I like a balance between residential taxpayers and homeowners versus the business myself. So I just don't, you know, I'd want at least a balance. If the homeowners relative to, you know, sidewalks and residential areas, minor home repair, you know, first-time home buyers, I like the program benefiting individual uses, but you know, I can also, also have supported a lot of improvements along downtown that impact the, you know, commercial businesses as well. So I just don't, I just like a balance to it, is what I'm suggesting.
Yep.
Councilman Levesey?
Mr. Allen, are these numbers based off the new census? I know there has been discussion as to that number was going to go up or down. Is this that new number based on the 2010 census number?
Do you mean the dollar amount?
The dollar amount from CDBG.
I don't know if it's really based on the census. We're, we're still waiting.
There's no new lines yet?
No, there are no new lines, but as part of the historic district survey, we can, you know, maybe let Mike kind of talk about how we can functionally add areas, because right now, the, the low mod area going to the west stops at 15th Street.
Correct.
So. We have the opportunity to define an area, say the historic district, and actually survey, income survey, the people who live there to qualify a small area for sidewalks or streetlights, basically.
Without waiting on HUD?
Without waiting on HUD to give us new numbers, exactly. It, it's more labor-intensive, and it will take a while to do, but we can, we can offer that up. We have to send all of our research criteria to HUD first, then they approve it, and then we can actually do the survey. But that is one way that we can look at improving the sidewalks in that district. We've heard most, a lot about that.
Yeah, and, and I would echo what Miesa Peterman said. As far as projects specifically, at least I get a lot of comments about sidewalks in the historic district. They're, they're pretty old, and as far as infrastructure goes, need a lot of attention. And I see that's a, a big number for the project, the money we have left. And I would also agree with Councilman Edmondson that the facade, especially on the bank, would make a very large impact in the appearance of downtown, so.
Just, just one more comment, and this is kind of directed towards Councilman Fowler, but not at you, but at your comments, in that the commercial side of it, you have to remember on, on the residential side, when we do those improvements with minor home repair, you may get some benefit back in that it raises the value of the home, so therefore maybe you get a raise in your property tax. But on the commercial side, when you do those facade improvements, not only would it not maybe generate some more property tax because it increases the value of the building, but you might also get a trickle-down, so to speak, with the sales tax, and that now that more people are attracted to that area, therefore they will spend more money, and we will gain from the city by the improvement of sales tax revenue from, from say, the downtown area where we didn't used to get that much shopping or that much public spending down in that area. It may have all been service at one time, and you, you miss out. So some of those things you need to keep in mind, that, that though it's separate, and you may seem like a lot of money, you, you have a bigger chance of a payback, so to speak, on that with commercial than you would with residential.
Yeah, I appreciate that point. I also, I also understand the need of the program. The federally funded program comes down in areas of need, and a lot of times, that comes down to residential homeowners, the people that pay the taxes, you know, and, not saying that businesses don't, they do as well. But at the same time, you know, it is, it is based on needs, and I think the citizens deserve that right to have, to be there asking for it as well, just like a business has the right for it. Okay?
And to that point, HUD has come out with a, a guide called Community Development Block, Block Grant Program, Preserving America, where historic preservation and historic tourism is a very high priority in their, in their, so that's kind of where we, all these tabs are different areas that we could use our CDBG for historic preservation. And I think that works well with our Downtown Alive group and what they're striving to do. That's why we have such an intensive list on our downtown.
We're good? Okay, I'll just make a comment then about the, the facade program. I think, my personal opinion is that's a, that's an important program to look at. We need that work in the downtown area to be done, so. I would add that. If there are no other questions then, or do we need further discussion at this point? All right, then we will move on to.
We'll be coming back to you. Yes. Yeah, certainly, and if I may, in, in the meantime, certainly let myself, let, or, or Mike know if you have any specific questions about these programs or ideas, or if you have additional ideas beyond the list, or to further maybe drill down each of those different items. It sounds like, appreciate all the good discussion here already, and I'm sure the Downtown Alive folks will, will certainly keep you interested in downtown as well. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. We move on then to mayoral announcements. I do have a point to ponder to share with you all. I did, didn't I? Ponder, yes. This comes from Lee Iacocca, and I received it from, this is for me kind of an opportunity to honor a friend of mine. For some time, one of my clients has spent, sent me little thoughts to think about on a, almost a daily basis for several years, and a few weeks ago, he passed away suddenly, and I kind of miss having these little points to ponder come across my desk the way they used to, and I wanted to share one of the last ones that he sent me. A friend of mine, his name was Owen Gehagan, and this particular quote comes from Lee Iacocca. It says, "In times of great stress or adversity, it's always best to keep busy, to plow your anger and your energy into something positive." And I think that's a good thing to keep in mind. I have no visitor forms. Do we have anybody in the audience that we missed? Can't hear you. Come on up.
Come on.
Okay, you can fill out the form, fill out the form afterward.
Sorry, I'm calling the rules.
It's quite all right. We'll get you, Mike, hold on.
I'm not really prepared at all, but I just wanted to say, kind of in response to what the point you were making, I think Mike and Scott mentioned that there's been over $1 million over the last five or six years that have, in the CDV, CDBG money that's gone towards, you know, the low income and the first time, first-time home buyers program and the sidewalk improvements. Virtually none of that money has gone to the commercial facade repair or renovation, so, and kind of in keeping with what you suggested of balancing the, the budget and being a fair playing field, that's kind of what we're asking for, is to have some of those funds come to facade renovations at this point. You know, the, the commercial business owners have stayed downtown and haven't left downtown and gone to another district or anything. You know, we haven't moved out on Adams Derry or out on 7th Highway or anything, so, kind of like what Kent says, I think it's, it's time, you know, Downtown Alive is working hard to renovate downtown and revitalize downtown, and I think some of that facade renovation money would help a lot on our behalf, so. That's my last one.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I need to do one, correct one. I think you said $1 million went to minor home repair and first-time home buyers?
No, the whole package. I mean, some of those different things.
Okay, because I think only $130,000 went to combined, so far what their numbers say is minor home repair and first-time home buyers.
Right, but the point I'm making is $1 million has been spent on, of CDBG money, is that correct, on things that have nothing really to do with facade renovation for the downtown commercial district?
Oh.
Is that fair to say?
For facade, I think sidewalks, streetlights.
That's not, that's.
It's not, it's not facade.
It's not facade.
I don't think we've done the facade in the past.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's the point I was just trying to make, is that really none of those funds have gone for facade renovations at this point, up till now, so.
Okay, I think Mr. Johnson wants to make a comment, too.
It, it is related, since it is about downtown and it doesn't apply to CDBG, but not to forget that the city council approved the Main Center Redevelopment Corporation, which has been around for at least 10 years, which provides property tax abatements for commercial properties in the downtown area, and there have been, I believe, hundreds of thousands of dollars in abatements that have been approved for downtown businesses, and some of those improvements have gone to facade renovations and exterior improvements. So I think the council is taking a two-pronged approach, in many instances, to using multiple tools to help re-energize and put new investment into our downtown.
Good point, and, and I appreciate that. I think I just, my initial point was really about balance. I think that I've seen years where maybe it just gets skewed one way or the other, and I'm always after that balance between residential and, and businesses.
I understand that, so, thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. We're done.
Good job.